This is a special meeting of the City Council, City of Southfield, for Thursday, March 11th at 6:00 PM via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thanks.
Present.
Cruz?
Present.
Brightwell? Brightwell is here, give me one second, people are just coming in. Brightwell? I see him.
I'm here.
Haskins? He's coming. Okay. Mandelbaum?
Present.
Morris? Taylor?
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum, and we will excuse Councilwoman Morris, and we do have the city administrator and other city staff on the line for the special meeting.
Thank you. Council, this is a special meeting for tonight, and we have, the first item that we would like to discuss is the Second Amendment agreement to Purchase Real Estate Contour Acquisitions LLC. Who would like to speak to this first, I guess? Fred, would that be you?
Yes, Madam President. I will start. City Council approved at its Committee of the Whole on October 5th, the purchase agreement with Contours for approximately 97 acres at the former Northland Mall. On January 11th, City Council approved the First Amendment. That meeting was also conducted as a Committee of the Whole, which amended the purchase agreement with Contours. Tonight, we're asking City Council to authorize the Second Amendment to the purchase agreement with Contours Acquisitions LLC. We have a presentation we'd like to present to City Council. And if I may, Madam President, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Steve Palms with Miller Canfield and Neil Silver with Dada and Mann Law Firm to go through the major, the salient points of this agreement of the proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. This is Steve Palms, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you, Fred. And I believe on the slides, I'm not, I think those are available, there's a slides that I think Shelley prepared identifying the terms of the Second Amendment and taking you through on about the fourth page of that after the picture of the proposed development and then the timeline. There's then a summary of what is in the, in the Second Amendment, and I will go through those elements briefly. The inspection period is being extended, it currently expires tomorrow, and there is...
Steve?
Yes?
Yes. Wendell, or could you advance to slide four? Slide, one more. All right, go ahead, Steve.
Good, okay. Good idea. I don't have control over that, Fred, so I appreciate who was ever doing that. Yes. So, the inspection period, as I mentioned, currently expires tomorrow, and there's been a lot of progress that Contour has made, but one of the central elements that has not yet occurred is the confirmation by the state of the brownfield incentives that Contour is looking for, the economic incentives in order to support the project. So, to provide for additional time to get that approval, we are extending the timeframe for this inspection period to June 30th of 2021, or the date that that brownfield work plan is approved, whichever comes first. So, again, outside date, June 30, or the date on which the brownfield plan is, the 381 work plan is approved. So, that's, that's the timeframe we're talking about. And in order to compensate the city for expenses that the city incurs as a result of this deferral, Contour is providing an additional deposit of $150,000, which would be non-refundable, and that roughly approximates three months' worth of expenses. The cost to the city, as I understand it, is approximately $50,000 a month just to maintain the property. And as a condition for providing those funds and agreeing to the extension of these terms, Contour wanted the city to include in this an agreement to provide some additional incentives for their project, which I will go through in a minute. But just to note that Contour requested that that provision be included in this agreement. So that the development agreement that we are preparing and will need to complete before the closing, that outlines, among other things, the incentives that will be provided, that will include a number of incentives to be provided by the city, and if we can go to the next slide, it outlines those incentives. First, the amount of $6,008,000,000 that would be applied to the costs of public improvements like water mains, roads, and whatnot. $3,008,000,000 applied to demolition costs, and $9,500,000,000, which is the net proceeds that we would receive from the sale. And I should note that the sale price is actually $11,000,000,000, but we had agreed at the outset that at the time that the property was purchased, that we would buy and acquire back from Contour the areas that are needed for roadway easements, sanitary sewer easements, other easement lines, and that we pay for that property that we're acquiring, that easement property, and that price is roughly $1,500,000,000. So that with this additional $9,500,000,000, we're effectively committing the proceeds that we would receive from the, from the sale to support this development. There are conditions that we also outline in the amendment, and the next slide outlines, actually, there are a couple of pages that outline the conditions. The first is that the funds that we're providing need to be used to pay what is defined in the Brownfield Redevelopment Act as eligible activity costs, things like environmental remediation, and actually Neil Silver, who's also on the phone, and Fred can further outline what constitutes eligible activity costs. But the funds that they are receiving from us need to be applied to those costs. The MEDC needs to approve the brownfield plan and a combined 381 work plan for the project that's part of the brownfield approval. We need to review and approve a budget for Phase 1 of the project. And I should note that Phase 1 of the project, that there is, there are really a lot of different phases to this project. Contour is going to start with a residential project, but Phase 1 in its entirety is defined in the purchase agreement as a fairly expansive project, roughly a cost of $300 million to complete Phase 1, and it includes not only the residential along Greenfield, but it includes, which includes both residential units and commercial space. It includes the renovation of the former Hudson's Building to include 337,000 square feet of commercial market space and 254 loft apartments, as well as some other commercial space. It's a development that includes approximately 47 acres. So, the budget for Phase 1, again, approximately is $300 million, and we've received that recently, and we're in the process of reviewing that. So, again, the advance of these funds is conditioned on approval of that budget. Next page, please. So, and there's a process that Contour wanted us to include, that if we couldn't reach an agreement on Phase 1, that we would go to a third-party decision-maker who would help us reach an agreement with Contour, again, should we not be able to reach an agreement just between us. Then we will be confirming the process for advancing these funds and the benefits of the return on these funds, the reimbursement from the state pursuant to a process that's much like what would occur in a construction loan grant between a lender and a borrower. So that, again, we will establish a process so that, for example, we would be advancing money for specific items included in the budget on a monthly basis, so there wouldn't be, you know, requests coming in every other day or every day. So, it would be run in a process, again, much like a construction lender would run it, so that it's organized and managed, and as efficient as we can get it, obviously, again, so that there is, you know, our ability to anticipate what will be needed on a certain date, we can be ready for that, and then review the information once it's in and provide the funds in a timely way. So, again, the, another condition for the advancement of funds is that they need to relate to a particular phase that's been approved by the city in its municipal capacity, such as we've granted an approval as we speak to an initial phase of apartment buildings. We need to agree on the terms of reimbursement. The funds that are being paid, that are qualified as eligible activity costs are funds in addition to the funds that we're providing. Contour is also providing funds in that category, and since the repayment of these funds comes from a tax receipts over time, what we're going to agree to, what we have agreed to really in this letter, is that as the funds get returned, they're divided on a prorata basis based on the percentage of the overall eligible activity costs that we contributed, so that, for example, if there's a, you know, $1 million worth of eligible activity costs that have been paid, and we paid half, and Contour has paid half, then each payment that comes back generated by tax revenue gets split 50/50. Another condition is that we do need to complete the development agreement that's outlined in Section 4, Paragraph 4 of the purchase agreement. It outlines, you know, timeframes for demolition, you know, completing, starting and completing demolition, timeframes for starting and completing Phase 1 and the other phases of the project, so there's still some work to be done here. And that, as a condition to each advance, of course, we want to make sure that everything, you know, there's, there are no issues with compliance with the terms of our development agreement that we're putting together, and of course, we'll be advancing these funds only after the closing has happened. So, those are the conditions that relate to the advancement of these funds. And then the next page indicates one other item that's going to be included in, or that is included in the Second Amendment, and that's an acknowledgement by Contour that this soil that has been stored on site today, roughly 4,000 cubic yards, they will accept the property with that soil there, and we will agree that so long as the purchase agreement is in effect, we won't stockpile any additional soil on the property. So, those are, those are the terms that are included in the Second Amendment. Neil, I don't know if you might want to describe how we reached the conclusion, both in terms of the timeframe, set the timeframe as June 30, and also reached the conclusion that the advance of city proceeds would, would help expedite the closing. Maybe you could add to this commentary as to how we came up with those timeframes in this process.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Neil Silver. What was holding up this project is basically the state of Michigan's timeframe. One of the incentives that the developer was looking for was called a CRP loan, and initially they were looking for a CRP loan. It may have been actually in excess of that which was allowable under the statute at the time, but due to budget constraints, they loved the project, but were really only willing to allocate $5 million, which was the maximum I think they were going to allocate to any project in the state of Michigan. The timeframes for the approval of that would have taken us probably till November. And for want of a $405 million project that Contour is proposing here, $5 million seemed to be the tail wagging the dog. And so, what we tried to do is come up with a creative way to bridge that gap, and the approval of a 381 work plan in and of itself, they can usually do in eight weeks, and that's a long time, and we could probably get to the 381 work plan to them within 30 days. So, it really cut the, kind of about six months, or five to six months off of the project, and really gave more flexibility in the funding of this project.
Yeah, so that if we continued to go after the CRP loan, it would have been November, really realistically, before we could close, and so that just requiring the 381 work plan enables Contour to have sufficient time to get that done, so that a closing before June 30 is realistic. So, that's where that date came from.
Okay.
Since they were foregoing the CRP loan, then it was our determination that we could assist in that by providing the additional funds that we would have available.
And the CRP loan was from the state?
Yes.
Yes, the CRP loan, it was one of, a different type of incentive than brownfield financing. It actually would have funded vertical construction, not necessarily eligible activity costs, but it would have given them money that actually could have been put, let's call it vertical construction, rather than our money is typically ground-down money, eligible activity cost, or taking...
Okay. Did you want to add anything else before we move on?
No, that's really the summary of what's in the Second Amendment, the rationale for the request, the timeframes. So, hopefully, that gives you a picture of where we are and why we're here, looking for another extension.
Okay. Fred, did you want to add anything else, or no?
Not at this time, Madam President.
Okay.
We spent a lot of time speaking individually with council members, and we're happy to do our best to answer questions this evening.
Okay. Councilman Cruz, since you're the Chair of the Northland Steering Committee, would you care to make a statement or update us on why we're having this meeting tonight, what's brought us to this point, the questions and concerns that the committee may have?
Yeah, Madam President, I would really just say that, you know, during our deliberations, excuse me, what we continue to find, there's just a number of numerous parts taking place as we're trying to close this deal. As the city administrator has reminded me and others of us on the committee, Contour has probably been the one interested buyer that is going to get us closest to what it is that we charged him and ultimately that steering committee to do. It was as part of the plan. And so, while it may seem like things may be moving at snail's pace, they really aren't. There's constantly work that needs to be done and different entities that are involved. And so, I really would just say that as of today, and earlier, and especially after some earlier discussion today and tonight, that, you know, to the June 30 deadline, I think it's doable and should be strongly considered. But at the same time, I would also follow that with, at that point, I think then is when we really need to make a strong stance, one way or the other. If everything goes right, and we're closer to where we want to be, or where we want to be, I think, I think we're in business, and this is a good deal for us. If there's, if we're quite not there, and there's more extensions and more questions and things that are going on, we may have to think about moving on from that point, too. The only thing I would say is unless we had something stronger in writing about anything further beyond June 30 that would give us some more guarantees, but what we have right now, I think, is acceptable, and I hope council feels that same way. And tonight, what we're just, I just want to make clear is that all we're asking for is to allow them another couple months to get a few more things together. We're not voting yes or no on the plan totally at all, it's just simply the timeframe to make sure that finances and everything are in place, because I think what we would hate worse is a half-done project. So, it looks to me as a public-private partnership, it behooves us to try to help invest, to make this happen. The only one, I did have, and that would be my comment, Madam President. And if I could just ask one point of clarity from Steve about the tax revenue, I thought I heard you say that we would recoup 50/50, and I thought this morning we said 2/3, 1/3.
Yeah, I can answer that. I think, this is Neil Silver. What Steve was using was an example, until the numbers are actually been finalized between our contribution and the remainder of the eligible activity costs, we don't know what that sharing ratio would be. The numbers that were provided to us, if it ends up being the final agreed-upon eligible activity costs, I think it was a total of about $65 million in eligible activity costs, and their breakdown was 65% of the eligibility activity costs would be paid for by the developer and 35% by the city, and therefore, prorata would be 65/35 on every dollar that came in.
Okay, got you. All right. That said, I do believe that our steering committee overall, there's a consensus to move forward, and that would be my recommendation to council. And Madam President, that's really all that I have to add to this right now, I think I feel comfortable.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. We'll turn it over to council now. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, you know, I really have no other comments. I know that Councilman Cruz pretty much has my same sentiments. You know, on the Northland Committee, I think this is the, this is the third time I've heard this presentation, understand all the different, all the different players, all the different directions that this can go in, and like Councilman Cruz said, you know, this is the best plan that we have right now to get us to what our vision is. And I think that we should just try to continue on the path and try to keep this moving forward, because, you know, overall, while, you know, there's, there's a lot of pain right now, but overall, I mean, this is going to be a great move if it works out for the city. So, I think that we should continue moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Haskins?
Thank you. I don't really have anything to add. The questions I had were answered earlier, and I think the present, going over the supplemental material that was sent to us earlier, I don't, I don't have any further questions. I think most of the questions that I had were answered earlier. So, I'm just looking forward to this, this project getting going.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Is, is the developer on the line?
Yes. Yes, good evening.
Okay. Oh, good evening, how are you? We, I had asked earlier today, haven't, what if the 381 brownfield is not approved by June 30? And I think we were told that Contour would still go through with the project, is that correct?
March 22nd, Contour and Bonner Advisory Group will be submitting the 381 work plan to the state. We feel very confident that that will succeed and will secure our, you know, the state will support us on this 381 work plan. And again, we believe in the plan, we believe in the city, we believe in the vision. I think we all were at a mutual agreement that this is, you know, what benefits the city and Contour. And we're here, we've invested a lot of time and money and effort towards this, and we want to move forward to it, one way or the other.
Okay, but I guess if, for some reason it doesn't, if the 381 plan doesn't happen, you're still going to move forward, you said, on this project?
Yes.
Okay, and would you be willing to put that in writing, that you would close by June 30th, if not sooner?
I mean, our, our plan, yeah, our plan, Ms. Banks, is to close sooner. I think we were all in agreement that June 30th is the deadline, and, you know, one way or the other, we're going to close by June 30th, and we're going to stick to that. Like, like Mr. Banks said, there's a lot of hurdles here, and it's been, it's a complicated project, probably one of the most complicated projects in the state, but at the end of the day, of the day, once this gets finalized and work gets going there, it's an exciting project for everybody.
And I do agree with you, I think it is an exciting project. I do have one final question regarding the timeline of the project. Do you think it's, it's realistic that by October of next year, Phase 1A will be completed?
We, you know, our goal here is to start this, this project as fast as possible, and that's going to include the demolition cleanup of the site, number one. But with modern enhancements in vertical construction, like modular panelization, we feel very confident that that will happen. We've been studying this process, we have our in-house architects working on it daily since last year. We're fortunate to have 90% of our workforce in-house from underground plumbers, electricians, mechanicals. So, we're doing this in nine different states throughout the country, so we feel very confident in that, in that projection.
Okay, and does that also include, like, filling in the underground?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's, that'll be something we want to do right away. So, if we close by June 30th, we want to start cleanup of the site the next day, and we're mobilizing and getting ready for that.
Okay. I don't think I have any further questions right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Brightwell?
Obviously, I've been immersed in this project for quite a while. I'm still feeling uncomfortable after all these years, after all these months since I came on board. But that, that being the case, I've just put myself in the uncomfortable mode, and it's just too many, too many question marks and just a couple things that are, that I just don't feel comfortable with. So, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this project at this time? Okay, hearing none. Fred, I'll turn over to you.
Madam President, we're asking City Council to authorize a resolution for the mayor and city clerk to sign the Second Amendment to the purchase agreement as presented.
Okay. All the questions that I had were, this is about the third or fourth time I've met about this, and they've all been answered to my satisfaction. Items that I have requested have been sent and was here tonight, I can see the slides showing the council what the phases are and all of that kind of stuff, so I'm okay with moving this forward. So I'm okay with moving this forward as presented tonight. So, council, are we ready to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to move that we approve the resolution to, of the Second Amendment agreement to purchase real estate with Contour Acquisitions LLC.
It's Councilman Mandelbaum.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz and seconded by Councilman Mandelbaum to approve the Second Amendment agreement to purchase real estate for Contour Acquisitions LLC. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
No.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. Morris is absent.
Yes. Okay. Is there any other business for the public part of this? I understand we have a closed session scheduled for tonight as well.
Madam President?
We have communication.
Oh, that's true. I'm sorry, I forgot. Before we go to communications, Mr. Zorn, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I would. I'd like to just thank council. I know a tremendous amount of time, deliberation, conversations with myself, Alice Sevis, Rochelle Freeman. We're going to continue to work towards the vision of the community, as it has been said a number of times. And I think Councilman Cruz, as Chairman of the Northland Committee, summed it up very well. This group has come closer than anyone else to our vision document. And we are committed to doing that. This is a transformative program. This part of the city has been challenged for a number of years, and this is the type of vitality and life that will bring in new residents to Southfield as well as tax base. So we're excited about this. And again, to all of the elected, you know, the mayor included, I know how much time you've put into it, and I'm grateful for that, that you're willing to make that commitment. Thank you, Madam President, and we're going to move this forward, make it happen.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time for our communications. Madam Clerk, would you open the lines? If there's anyone on the call that has something to say to the council, you can speak now.
Madam President, the lines are open.
Thank you. Well, is there anyone on the line, anyone called in?
It's people here, but apparently they're just here to view. They don't want to speak. All the lines are, the mics are open.
Okay. All right, then. Well, next, I guess we'll go to the next session.
Okay, we just need a motion?
Yep. Council, may we have a motion, please, to go into closed session?
Madam President?
Madam President, Councilman Cruz moves that we go into closed session.
Councilman Mandelbaum seconds.
Can we please, hold, hold, please, can we please make the motion with the reason that we're going into closed session, to keep us legally protected?
Sure. Move that we go into closed session for the discussion of material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state and federal statute 8H of the Open Meetings Act, Michigan Freedom of Information Act, information or records subject to attorney-client privilege, specifically the city, Southfield City Attorney, written opinion for driveway easement for city of Southfield, County of Oakland.
So, and Mandelbaum, so, the motion?
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz and supported by Councilman Mandelbaum to go into closed session for the item as been explained, for discussion of the material exempt from discussion and for the written opinion of the driveway easement, city of Southfield, from our city attorney. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Okay. Madam President, just give me a couple minutes so I can get us logged into the other one.
Okay, so we'll reconvene in about three minutes, everybody. We're going back into our regular session. I want to thank everybody, first of all, tonight, for coming to this special meeting. We did have a few things, business-wise, that we needed to handle for the city, and we've accomplished that tonight. We do have one item that's coming before us during the session, and we're going to ask our attorney if she would read the resolution for us, please.
Once...
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, we got you, Doc.
Thank you, Madam President, council. The resolution coming on of our closed session that we held pursuant to the Open Meetings at Section G to discuss a written attorney opinion. Coming out of that, the city council will uphold the vote in regards to the Southfield request for grant of an easement of the driveway. That the city council will also, understanding the applicable law to this issue, strongly urge the Southfield School Board to consider the conditions that the Southfield City Council requested at the initial vote, which included the emergency use access and the installation of two gates on both ends, a decorative gate at the Green Valley Drive terminus and a standard gate where the access drive connects to existing parking lot, and also to comply with the city's woodland ordinance.
Thank you, council.
President, I'd like to move that we accept the attorney's recommendation as stated and allow her to move forward with deliberations between us and the Southfield School District.
Is there support?
This is Councilman Hoskins. I support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Hoskins, for the accepted resolution as presented by our city attorney regarding the easement for the Southfield Public Schools. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Banks?
I'd like to ask for a point of privilege to clarify my no vote.
Yes.
Okay. The reason I voted no is that the school board never considered another option as presented by the city. And the second is that the residents were not notified of this revised proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing that we have no other business tonight, I declare this special meeting closed. Have a good night and a good weekend, everyone.